Time of 7:41.
Meeting is back.
Time is now 7:41 on the executive session. As in, included the discussion and executive sessions.
Donald, will you speak up so we can hear you, please? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike Charter.
That works. There. Thank you. Hello.
Question, we're here with Robert Romero, Angela Adams, Monica, Donna, Sarah Forrest, Carol Pino, Frank Barajas, Berna Thorne, Ken Forrest, Jerry McDaniel, Madonna. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any successful discussion of any matter not included in the motion go into executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session, in violation of the open meeting law, without that, you state your concerns for the record. None, the next agenda item, yeah, we'll go back to it right there.
Just one quick, someone pointed out a mistake that I shouldn't, I should not have voted on the approval of the April meeting notes because I was not a seated member of council at that point. So I guess I should have abstained from that vote. I don't know.
You told that the...
The April, yeah, I think we, the April 25th meeting, I voted yes to approve those minutes.
April 25th?
Yeah, yeah, and I shouldn't have.
Was this much?
Is that staying?
Yeah.
I would be in the same vote. I wasn't done. I'm council yet. I can come to the council if you want me.
We're in vote now? No, this, we're talking about April 25th.
April.
Utility report. When we're going to make the motions on the executive session first? Do you want to do that first, or you want to do that in the business?
Oh, yes, whenever it's proper to do, I don't know.
Well, probably under the business.
Okay, do it, do it, bring it up.
Thing, two of them for. How's everything going, Joe?
Uh, everything's going. We are starting to use more water, of course, hotter. And still people, water and stuff like that. We are starting to use more water. The wells are running more right now, but...
How many wells do you run?
Uh, I've got two running. One for 12 hours and one for 14 hours. And then I have one resting. And then within the next week, probably right after 4th of July, I'll, I'll switch them out. Do I have one resting for at least two weeks? And then I'll just keep rotating them out like that for now until we get the Marishio going.
You know, I'll, I'll, uh...
Uh, it's holding good. It's holding good. So...
Any new ones on the vehicle?
Yes, we did get a truck. Uh, we picked up a 2013 Ford F-250. Uh, four-wheel drive. It came with a eight-foot in, eight-foot, two-inch Boss V snowplow. Um, the truck basically around here and with the condition and the mileage that's on it is still worth $28,000. And the snowplow, depending on where you get it, is between five and seven. We picked it up for 15,400. So, and it's only got 50,000 miles on it.
15,400 plus the buyer's premium?
Yes, 15,400 plus the buyer's premium. That I, that was on me. I didn't realize there was a buyer's premium. And it was a 12.5%. So, that was on me.
So the total cost was $17,325?
Yes. But, I mean, it's...
26, 28?
26, $28,000 truck. And snowplow.
How many nights a week are you, uh, playing for this field?
Well, I've been wanting to go a minimum of at least two nights, but last week I wanted to do it three, and the wind and the rain was, plays a big factor in it. And when that's going on more than 15 to 20 miles an hour, you're wasting your time. And if it's going to rain right after or right before, you can't do it. So we sprayed Tuesday night, and then, well, I had the meeting tonight, so... But we're trying to get at least two nights a week.
I've got a question, yes. Were you doing around the augmentation ponds? Is that area?
Yes, sir.
And how much sewer ponds?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we're even throwing in those, uh, those, uh, they look like donuts. We're throwing them in down there at the sewer ponds as well.
Well, the chlorine, the chlorine ones?
No, the ones that kill the mosquitoes and stuff.
I've got something to ask you on your utility report. 6/8/24 chores. Sarah doing chores?
She did that day, assisted me. Yes, because we had the water leak. So she's been doing them. Her, she'd been basically doing them the whole time when there was nobody else here. So I had the water leak that night before. We worked till 3:00 in the morning, and that day I had to get back out. MGM came up at 8 o'clock, and I went straight to the water leak. We got it fixed, and she did the chores for me. So...
Anything else for the board? What did, when you put chores back there?
The chores, the chores consist of checking the wells, or going up and checking the reservoir first, getting your chlorine reading, uh, making sure everything's not too high on that or too low. Uh, we have to stay above a .2, and we can't go above a .4. But for a small town like this, they don't really want us going above a 2.5. So we have to make sure the chlorine's right in there. And if it is, if it's high or low, we have to adjust it. But we have to check the level of the reservoir to make sure all the water's in there and it's full. And then we go check the wells to make sure the wells are running. Everything's good, the timers are okay on it, they're still up and running. Check the chlorine, make sure, because it's got a, it's got a machine that feeds the chlorine out of a, out of a 55-gallon drum into the line. Make sure there's nothing disconnected, make sure that's not turned off, make sure there's no leaks. Uh, consist of picking up the trashes, uh, going down, cleaning out the sewer, sewer trap down there. That's, that's, and then if something else happens, you know...
So that, that's one person that does that?
That's one person, yes.
You have like an average of how much time per day it takes one person?
About an hour and a half.
Thank you. Anything else in council?
Those are to show what I've flushed already and opened and checked and have done. And whether they're in good working order, not so good, or bad. And there's only one that is out. Everything else has been in good working order. It's easy open, easy closing, and they have been flushed. And the ones that are blanked, that's not in there, are the ones I'm still, I still have not got to. I called four companies to come in and do a bid. Two have only responded.
You got to pick a one, how much is it?
You see, the one from ESPI is a total of 5280. And that consists of new lights, 10 new lights, two two new receptacles above the ceiling, uh, six new GFI's along the wall. And that's hauling off all the old stuff and taking it away for us. And then the other one is from Red Wing Electric, and it consists of 7536. And less materials.
Less?
Less materials, but they want to put a new, new, uh, panel on the wall, too. So I, that's why, you guys asked me to get the bid, I just brought it to you guys.
Now, I firstly think you want me to done. And mostly now we know is this, like, this is the thing. I'm following the meeting.
How I didn't do this?
Motion to go with this bid to fix the electrical problems in the shop.
A second motion.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Flory?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, I mean, obviously, we have a mosquito issue. Um, and especially, you know, what we talked about with the pond and stuff. And I understand that you have to, I mean, the weather is unpredictable and stuff. However, we do have a lot of seniors and disabled people with issues in town, so I don't know if there's any way that maybe updating the website daily or something when he's going to spray, so people can make, you know, accommodations to, you know, stay in at that time when you're going to spray?
Yes, ma'am. Um, they do put it on the website when we are spraying. And then I also do a dry run. We do a dry run without spraying, so people can hear and see that we're going out. We don't spray until after the dry run is done. And then once they hear us out and the machine going, but it's not spraying, then I'll, I usually don't start spraying until about 7:30, quarter to 8:00. I'll start out with the dry run about 6:30, 7 o'clock, so everybody can see and hear. Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain to people the same thing you explained to me about this, this spray?
The spray, this spray that we have is a little bit more expensive than I decided to go with because it's not, it won't hurt the people that have the breathing. Basically, first of all, the first person I thought of was my mother. She is oxygen dependent. So, and she lives right next to that augmentation pond. So I got the spray that's not going to hurt the people with the breathing problems, any type of breathing problems, whether it's asthma, COPD, oxygen, or any of that stuff. It doesn't hurt the animals. Uh, the old spray, if I'm not mistaken, you had to cover your dog's dish or dump the water and stuff like that. This you don't have to. It's, it will not hurt it.
So it's, it's safer for pollinators?
Yes, it is actually, yes, it will not, this is designed not to kill any of the pollinating type of insects. I mean, unless you're, they come in direct contact with it. That's the only way, I mean, but if I back up to a hive, yes, it's going to, it'll damage it.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Grader.
You want to ask it now, or you want to wait till it comes up?
You mentioned it here, and what?
I didn't.
You didn't?
No, sir. Oh, you mean in my report? Okay, what, what we're talking about on the grader?
Uh, it says it's an antique.
Yep.
It was a dinosaur.
Yep.
What? Why did you have to put so much fluid in? Is there leaks somewhere, or what?
It's using fluid. We put in, tell me I'm not wrong, Mr. Brahas. We put in, what, four gallons, five gallons of transmission fluid? On that grader? Quite a bit. And then the time I got it moved, we got it up, we got it running, I got it moved and everything and operational. By the time I sat it back down, the next day it went out, I got three gallons low.
Can this fix, be fixed?
That's up to you guys. I'm not saying no. I'm not saying no at all.
Well, you leave three gallons in a day, you say?
Yeah. This gallon, when I, by the time we got done moving it around, we've got the controls working and everything. I mean, it was up and running, and it starts up good, it does.
Can we get an estimate, and what time it'll be to get?
I'll have to call somebody to come do that, I'm, yeah.
What was the leak at?
Right underneath, somewhere in from the transmission. Yes, sir.
Well, I know Carl said he'd come down and look at it.
He did, he was the one with us.
Because, uh, he used to own the machine, so he's familiar with it.
Yeah, no, we got it up, we got it running, and we got it moving around and stuff, and the control's working. But right after I parked it, the next day, it was almost three gallons low again. Just on the transmission, not the hydraulics or anything, but the transmission.
Did Carl, did Carl look at that or not?
No, I don't think he even knew about it, because I hadn't talked to him yet. He helped us that day get everything going.
I didn't have a leak for nothing that day.
No, as soon as I parked, when I parked it is when it did.
Totally empty.
So...
So if the board wants, we can get a hold of Carl, because like I say, it used to be his machine. And have him come down and look at it, and see what he decides, if that's what the board wants.
Well, if he can look at it and instruct us with what's wrong. If Carl's not going to fix it, but we, we can get someone that will.
Did you order the cable?
Not yet, no, sir. No, sir. Not yet. The throttle cable? We had to run a piece of baling wire.
It worked?
It worked. It did, it worked. So... No, sir, it's already paid for. Yes, sir. So I just got to go pick it up.
What was that?
New home, Minnesota. You know, it's, it was a deal.
It's about 45 minutes away for my family.
Yeah? I mean, it's a 14-hour drive.
I know, I was sitting here thinking, hmm, I should go visit. My stress.
And I'll, I'll be leaving Sunday for that.
I also know that there is not, we asked you not to repeat.
Yep. I haven't, this last week, I haven't.
Let's continue, because I think that whoever was responsible for doing it should be charged for the work that you did remotely. Because this is crazy, how many times did you guys have to do this?
There for a while, it was every day.
But they're not breaking laws, so how would you charge them with restitution?
Yeah, they're not, I mean, the sheriff's department's the one that told them they can do it as long as they use chalk.
Why, they say the district, why are they, you're not even...
Yeah, talk to, talk to the sheriff.
You're not even part of this judge's dictionary.
Did you speak up, what did you say?
They're, they're here to help us.
I know, I know, but...
But I, I don't know who, I'm not saying it was these two. I don't know who, you have, you have to talk to the sheriff himself. But they said as long as you use chalk and not really vulgarity, they can keep doing it.
I love graffiti, graffiti.
We can't hear you.
There was some lieutenant from the, uh, San Luis County Police Department that told them that it was okay for them to write anything they wanted to, except for permanency.
And as long as it's in chalk.
As long as it's in chalk. It's not permanent.
It's not permanent, exactly, that's, so that's, and that's one of the reasons why I haven't washed it off or started anything, or done anything.
Well, I was stuck with it, yeah.
Mission taken down.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's not me pushing anything, so...
We wanted that, but they're not breaking the law, so we can't stop them from doing it. However, I think if, we see if we make some positive changes, we're going to stop seeing the graffiti on the walls out there once we get some of these issues fixed.
And need time to go about the stuff that's falling off, we can pay for that.
That needs to be addressed with the person, with the company that put it on, because they put it on wrong. They did not put enough...
I know they, they talked to, you know, Ken Apple, who's that? And do that?
Who did it, you know?
Ken Apple.
Ken Apple, he was con...
Whoever did the concrete is liable, because they should have been insured. And they're the ones that should address that issue with the council and be responsible.
Well, I know they got a hold of him, but he hasn't got back.
Well, you know, you, there's always steps that you can take to resolve this issue, but that is not, it has not happened for chalk writing.
Anyway, anything else for Joe?
Joe, was, was the maintenance department involved in putting up this new security system?
Hmm, I had cameras, but that was it.
Where did you get the cameras?
I purchased them from Walmart when we were getting all the trash back here. Um... For a quick, couple of quick cameras, I, I went to Tyron. And I was...
Did we not approve, uh, to have cameras put up right here at the building and also?
At the wells. Yes, yes. One was to go back here. Yep.
Okay, there's people.
Yeah. So yes, you're right, yes, it was approved from, from them.
So can we get ahold of the attorney, or whoever we need to, to have Ken come back out here and repair this, you know? Because it's, it is his negligence that it's falling apart. It has nothing to do with, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it has nothing to do with the chalk or the power washing. It's the fact that they...
They're, they're saying, not with the chalk, they're saying with me washing it off, that water's getting behind it and pushing it out, and...
What about the snow and the rain? That's not true.
No, I, I know, I know, that's what they're saying, but that's why they won't, that's why they won't warranty it, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'll tell you what, if I were you, I would question them for questioning your intelligence. If they think that you're that dumb to believe that chalk is deteriorating that side left still, then you should...
They're not saying the chalk.
But the water, so then...
Because it was already cracked when I started washing it, and if, they said it was getting behind, so why was it cracked before? That's what my question is.
That is what I'm telling you, if they think that, because even with water, it should not...
Right.
That should hold up.
They should have put a backing on there, either chicken wire or whatever material.
Well, we know, we know it's defective, so do we use the town, or is this where we use the town attorney?
Probably going to have to with this one.
Send a demand letter to fix it? Do we then take them and sue them in small claims, whatever we have to do to get them fixed?
Yes, sir.
I think the first thing to do is to contact him and, you know, see what, what is your...
Well, he says that we have contacted him, and he hasn't responded. So I would say maybe a demand letter next.
A certified letter?
Certified demand letter, uh, to address this, and then pursue it.
Yeah, he's already came up and said they weren't going to do it.
Well, then, so you're going to turn it over to our attorney.
Okay.
Anything else for Joe?
If we, once we've approved this electric system, electrical system, how soon can they start?
Um, the ESPI said within the next three weeks.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, I actually have two questions, three questions for you guys. Um, I asked about this when I first started on, about our sick time. And all I got was, bring me what the county has. We, you guys, we all know what they do, they only get, they get four hours of pay period. We're only getting 1.2? 1.8?
Well, that's what we told you, and I'm going to put the county's, is that we have a guide of what?
They give four hours per pay period.
For your first...
You worked for them, you know, she works for them, I worked for them, we all know that.
For your first five years, yeah.
And it stays that way after that, too. It doesn't change after five years.
Well, how long's your pay period?
Um, it just depends on the month. I mean, some of it's 80 hours, just like us, some of it's an 88-hour period.
Isn't that a personnel issue that needs to be discussed? And should be put on the agenda?
It has been, that's a thing. I have asked him, I have asked him.
He's asking the board who's in charge of that. I'm saying you should take it up with Tyra, so she can put it on the council agenda, so they can discuss it for you, Joe, that's true, I get what you're saying.
Okay.
But the board's in charge of this, of that, so we should be able to question them about that.
Can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, please?
One of the things that we're doing is having workshops. And employee handbook is one of them. On the top of the list, you know, cover sick leave and...
PTO.
Yeah, because I've only, I've been here seven months, and I got seven hours, I don't even have enough time to take a day off.
Well, that, that's...
Yeah, well, we'll get it addressed.
If we can start a workshop.
I think the way it looks as of, for the 4th of July, it's on a Thursday, I was going to ask if we can have Friday off. I, it almost looks like it's just going to be Sarah and I. Working.
I've got no problem with that, when taking a long weekend, unless there's anything pressing.
I'll have to look at her doctor's note. Uh, I know she had, she had called and told me that she's going on medical, but she's supposed to bring in her doctor's bill. She bring it in?
It's in the public.
So it's indecent?
But it's, it can't be discussed in public, because it's a HIPAA.
It's HIPAA violation.
It's a HIPAA violation.
Okay, so then it comes down to, just you two, you're beginning...
As of right now, yes, Kenneth wasn't sure if he, but he did request it off. He did fill out the paperwork to have that off last month. And as far as I know, he will be off on that Friday. That's what I'm saying, I mean, right now, it's just going to be Sarah and I. So...
I think, you know, should there not be any emergencies, Joe, or anything?
I'll be back Monday.
Are you going?
Yeah, I will be back Monday night, yeah.
Oh. Well, thank God, I'll go pick up the truck.
I'm sorry, Gerald.
If there's no emergencies or anything on Friday, I think it's fine for you guys to take Friday off.
That's what I was going to say, it's just maybe kind of an on-call, if something emergency came up, that you guys would be available, but other than that...
People working on Friday.
Yeah, I, I can tell you probably the rest of the federal government, state government, nobody's going to be working Friday.
I'll agree. You will wait? Oh, yeah, I've got no problem with that. So who, who determines, never mind if you just, if the, if the, who determines the holiday?
Who determines the what?
Your guys' holidays.
A lot of it's federal, but also with the board. I mean, because like...
Like the debt of the commissioners, that are...
Yeah, commissioners, and it's like they give, well, like the Road and Bridge Department, because they're only working for 10s, they get that Thursday off, so they actually get the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off. But I mean, that's them.
I'll make the most of it, giving Friday off.
Second.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Flory?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Office report.
I've got several questions on these financials. Sarah, is, is Tyra the only one that handles the accounting? Or do you and Stephanie also handle some of the daily bookkeeping tasks?
Um, basically, she does most of the accounting there.
Okay, so you can't tell me why this in-bank checking account is negative $239,000?
Um, where, what?
It's on the balance sheet for the general fund as of May 31, 2024.
And it's different in this, because I think the parentheses means it was a...
And it's different in this, because I think the parentheses means it was a, like, like, in, like, if you're in, it's like opposite.
Parentheses denotes in accounting that it's a negative.
I think it's opposite, like, when you keep your checking, you know, when it's negative, it's like a negative thing, but it's opposite, I believe. If I remember correctly. It's really confusing.
So, it wouldn't, that makes no sense, because your, your FNB bank account balance is $56,557.09, and it shows in the positive, so why would the next bank account in-bank checking be negative $239,000? So, it can't be opposite on one account.
Right, right. No, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Right.
Um.
Okay. Why is her account payable $245,000 negative? On that same balance sheet for the general fund? Accounts payable, so it should be a positive under your liabilities.
Right. Honestly, Ms. Adams, I, I don't deal with this on the daily.
Okay. And I saw the check register, um, I saw a payment going out to Capital One. Is there a Capital One credit card that the town holds?
I believe that is the Walmart account.
Okay, and why is-
It's under Capital One, so-
And why is that not on the balance sheet?
You don't have the individual, that's why you have the check register. It's separated into each fund depending on what was purchased. So, your water fund, if it was something that was needed for something, we deal with water or sewer or gas or general or office.
But if it's a, if it's a liability, if it's a credit card or a loan, it should be on your balance sheet for whatever that is.
I just know it's like a, a card that we can use to charge our Walmart stuff.
Right, and it's a liability, so, yeah, so it should be on the balance sheet, so that's why I really wish Tyra was here so she could address these issues. Um, why were the profit and loss statements not provided to us?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I'll name it. She's always done the balance sheet and the statement of revenue.
Okay, statement of revenue is, you know, she's showing what's being paid, um, that's, what's projected on the budget and what was actually paid, but when you provide financials for any, uh, pretty much comment, company or government agency, the standard issue of reports is a balance sheet and a profit and loss statement. So, I'm going to need, we're gonna need to see profit and loss and balance sheets ending 12/31 for, I would say, going back to at least 2019 with the bank account statements, the loan statements, and the reconciliation reports. So, that's just the general fund. So, the next is the water fund.
Then they're all gonna be, I, I honestly-
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and address it, so it's on record. Um, on the water fund, the FNB Bank general checking is $52,401.18 in the negative. The in-bank checking account is $539,763.54 in the negative. The accounts payable is in the negative $254,000 and change. On the gas fund, the FNB Bank general checking is $38,000 and change negative. The accounts payable is $130,000 and change negative, and this all affects your total current liabilities. Sewer fund in-bank checking is negative $17,000 and change. The accounts payable is negative $64,000 and change. And then the other question I had on the track register, what was paid out? Um, again, was Capital One, so Capital One should be on one of these balance sheets somewhere, the general fund or water fund or whatever. So, we're missing that. Um, and then going back to the augmentation pond, that loan should be on a balance sheet somewhere, and that grant money should be on a balance sheet.
On the Capital One, it's not a credit card. It's a charge card. It's not credit.
Okay, so it should still be accounted for on the balance sheet somewhere. Basically, anytime you have a loan or a credit card, it's tracked almost like a checking register, so there will be an open balance. So, if it's something that you can charge, um, and it's to be paid later, is that what you, is it paid later?
Yeah, it's paid. So, basically, we have a limit that we, if we need it.
Right.
But we, um, it's not like a credit card where we have-
Okay, but it's still a line, it's still a line of credit, so it should show up on a balance sheet. So, you know what that liability is owed by the town. Okay. Um, so my only other question at this point in time was these large, uh, payments going out to Robert Half. They're doing the audits. So, right now, I saw a check for $15,000 for last month, and then another $24,000 going out to them. Um, so is that due to the fact that everything was such a mess, that it's taken them that much time? So, I mean, when I've seen audits and tax repairs, I mean, for multimillion-dollar businesses, typically the bills, $3,000, $4,000. So, right now, we've already paid them, um, it looks like $23,000, $33,000, about $38,000 at this point to get these audits caught up and the books straight.
It's not complete.
And they're not complete. I'm sorry, they have what?
Mediator.
There's a mediator?
Yes.
Okay. And who's, who's the mediator?
Who's the hell that's supposed to string out?
Chris? Chris, I think that's the other one. Priska?
Priska, okay, I've seen that name somewhere.
Yeah, she's the one that's getting it put into the form that Mr. Half wants it into, because he wants it in certain form, a certain way. But then she writes those, and then she goes before.
Form, you know that he wants it, go ahead, too.
Well, we've had several reports already that these audits are almost done, that they're actually setting on like 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Why would they not be filed?
He's, he's just going over the rest of it, just to make sure they're exactly, the way he wants them, and then it goes to the state, it's done. So, they've been on, there was twice last week, this last week, and they were on the phone with, and going over whatever needed to be go-
I don't see logic, because if they're done, that means they're finished.
Well, Priska gets them done, you know, he wants them, and then he does them, gives over it, is what I'm understanding, and then it goes to the state.
He works for us, though.
And he works for us, but it's slow, it's slow.
Okay, they're slow, but then there's also, like, I'm one, I'm seeing here in these books that if this money is having to be spent and it's taking this much time to get through the audit, the audits, that must be, mean that there's some serious issues in the town books that needs to be addressed.
How much is the mediator being paid now? I don't even see your name on the check.
We can't hear you, Bob. We can't hear you.
Well, I was wondering how much the mediator was getting paid.
Good question. Do we know when Tyra's supposed to be back?
I don't know.
Ma'am, I know you guys have a lot of questions for Sarah or the accounting, but I, I think it'd be best to make a list. Um, I, I know we've been waiting a long time, and I appreciate we brought tonight, but I honestly don't think that Sarah knows.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. Yeah, we'll, we'll obviously have to address this in another fashion. If we don't know when Tyra's going to be back and Sarah can't answer these questions, we're gonna have to go at it from another direction.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to get it on record, um, what I'm seeing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate, I just, I think we don't want Sarah to like, because she doesn't know the answers, that she's in trouble?
Yeah, no, no.
She doesn't know, she doesn't know.
Nope.
Well, since you're the one doing the agenda items in Tyra's absence, on the, um, that the, the office is requesting that we go to a minimum of two items per meeting on the agenda? Yeah, not gonna happen.
Two items per trustee?
Per trustee. Basically, what she's saying is, instead of coming in with a list of 12 items that you want put on one month, pick two items and let's address those.
That'll take us six months to do 12 items.
Well, pick what's more priority then, and then whatever's the biggest priority, I'm not, okay, that might have felt a little wrong. I would say whatever's the most important, that needs to be addressed more quickly, I would say that, but when you get 50 items that you gotta put on the agenda, then the meeting stretches out for hours, and if there's certain things that you can just come in to the office, then call the mayor, meet with the mayor, and go over what you could, and then maybe you can, maybe you can combine some of them into one instead of-
But the mayor works, the town council is one who actually, you know, we can meet with him, but why can't we just have a second meeting in a month? Or a third, until we get caught up on these. Eventually, we're going to catch up. But right now, you know what, uh, the way that I read everything, Donald doesn't have absolute authority to call or cancel meetings.
Yes.
It's the sixth mayor.
I think your words, yeah.
You let, I think my words. It's in the ordinances of the town, Doc.
Odd, odd, we read them, because what you're saying and what you get out of it is two different deals.
What I'm saying is, the council works-
We're gonna sit here and argue, we got a big docket, so just get this thing done.
Right, then how come you're not letting me finish?
Go ahead. You want your, you want your three minutes? You want your six minutes?
No, don't go there.
Come on, let's go.
No, no, you're not gonna put me on a time limit when everyone else gets, says you're a talk. The council is the one who sets the meetings.
No, they don't.
Yes. You need to read some of this, uh, report on, and it's coming up, so I'll, I'll let it go till we get to the agenda.
Anything else? Project manager.
I got one question to ask you.
The what?
Or ask, whether on the delinquent report, who is the one who makes the payment agreement, right?
Uh, usually Stephanie, she will set up an agreement, it needs to be, if she's not here or isn't, then I can set, but we have a payment agreement board that we can set up as long as they stay with that.
That's my, my timer, right?
No, I mean, it's just, if someone comes in and wants to set up a payment agreement for their, you know, because let's say they can't pay this month, but they could pay a little extra next month, then we can set up a payment arrangement with that person to get that, and then they have so much time to make a certain payment amount plus whatever their current bill is that next month.
And Tyra's aware of this, right?
Oh, yeah.
But what this report's showing, the way that I read it, is we make payment arrangements, oh, what, three, four, five of them, and there's 90 days to link with after they make the arrangements.
Because you have six months to pay. We'll divide it into six months. It sounds nice, but I always never offered that, even when I asked that in the meetings. Even after my meter was pulled in the middle of the winter. Sounds real nice. Yeah, it sounds real nice if that's actually what you-
Anything else? Yes?
Well, wait a minute. We didn't finish all the office paper. We didn't go through, um, quarter requests, um-
Office reports.
Agenda items, type of things, community center, EDA ramp, none of that was discussed.
EDA ramp was discussed.
No, it was not. She wants to know who can inspect the ramp. We were never asking about that. And the community center roof, we initially were told it was because of condensation coming off of the air conditioner, they was leaking down, you know. So, I'm thinking that that's what she's referring to.
And that's gonna be, who has the contract for that?
Okay, and then the agenda items that Mr. Verne brought up, two items for meeting.
That's in the old view. We're, right now, we're on the, uh, on the office report, and we just concluded that.
Yeah, it's on the second page, on the office report. Um, the community roof center, she's asking one of us board members to go look at that. I mean, don't we just, again, need to get a contractor in there to give us an estimate of what it's gonna take to get that fixed, or?
We're gonna have to put insurance claim.
I'm sorry?
Put it in the insurance claim.
An insurance claim? Okay, so it is insured?
Yes.
Okay, so who handles insurance claims?
We are, Sersa.
Sersa's our insurance provider.
Okay.
We contact them, bring-
Okay. So, who, who normally makes that contact?
Tyra would, or I believe there's where we could get all the, we need to do it, and we would have to.
Like an online portal kind of, request kind of thing? Okay.
Here in the future, I would be assisting with that, because I'm taking the classes with Sersa, that a lot of stuff, as, also as a safety coordinator as well.
Okay.
But right now, it's not me.
Okay. Um, so I guess we should decide who is willing to do that right now with the absence of Tyra? Um, since, so, yeah, the assistant town clerk or?
Sorry, I don't understand.
You read it?
Okay. Okay, Sarah's gonna look into that. Okay, core request, it just looks like it's a increase for records.
It don't do.
That's how you can do.
So, it looks like the original amount for request was $33.58, and there's a 23.16% increase, so it's now up to $41.37.
For what?
Oh, wow.
I'm sure they don't make those reports.
Core reports. Core requests.
Why? It doesn't cost that much, and I'm sure it doesn't take that much.
Government agencies must update their Colorado Open Records Act policy to reflect the new fee by July 1st, 2024. Failure to do so could result in noncompliance with state law, potential penalties. This fee increase is intended to cover the costs associated with research and retrieving public documents, ensuring transparency and access to government information for the public.
So what's not on here, there is a period, uh, I don't know how many hours it is, I think it's first hour, they can't charge the fee. There, there's other regulations to this that is short.
This is included in the, it's a memorandum.
Yeah, I've got, so, oh, there it is, okay.
Will the new rules be posted so that everybody knows? I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
I'm sure it would help.
On the website, they had it before.
Yeah, I mean, this is from the state of Colorado. Natalie Castle, director pursuant to section blah blah, maximum hourly fee, research retrieval, like, 33.58 to 41.37 as of July 1st, 2024.
It was just recently dated, too.
Yeah, it's, those two.
Thanks, bud. I've got a two and a half hour drive, I left, got motions, Peter, Sarah, and can respond to questions. And I'm on myself, you can.
Okay, thank you.
If the town trustee requests information from town hall, is this gonna apply to us?
Don't believe they're placed to.
I won't ask them.
Looks like the next thing is work orders and permits.
You have a project report?
It's listed on the office report.
Anything else? Yeah, no, come on up.
Um, just wanted to report that, uh, we finally got the final engineering design for the chlorination and the storage tank, uh, from Black and Beach. We got it yesterday, Sarah made a copy for each one of yous, uh, here's a copy of it, and then also on that, uh, there's a second, uh, memo on that from, it, it talks about, uh, the costs associated to designing building the tank. Once, um, you look it over, we can have a meeting with Black and Beach for any questions you might have. And once the town council signs the contract with Black and Beach, then, uh, CDPG gets involved, and we, what do you call it? We'll probably get between the 30 or 50,000 dollar search grant to help offset the cost of their design. Uh, once we get them on, and once they design the project and the cost associated with what it's gonna cost to build a tank and the chlorination building, then we can go to, through, uh, DOLA, apply for a DOLA grant to offset the cost, uh, through a grant, uh, for this project.
Is that gonna be for one, one tank, Ken, or is it gonna be for?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, one new tank and to repair one of the other ones. And it, it's all in here, so we'll have to review.
I don't know what you're looking at there.
No, we just, we just received it yes, uh, yesterday, so Sarah will have a copy to give to you.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting.
What about the outside restaurants and stuff, now, how, how they going?
There's a plumber that, uh, is on, is on board looking at that, and he said that, uh, there were some issues with the, uh, water pressure that he's having to get for the color pressure, pressure valve, so he's trying to replace, uh, the, Joe, what do you have to replace the?
He, there's, there's.
Quite a bit.
Replace, there was not enough pressure, when those toilets require so much pressure flush, that are in there, and there's not enough water pressure going to that, flush those toilets, three of them. So he, uh, he'd gotten, uh,
Just left out.
Almost like a pump, kind of like a hydro pump that, it helps suck the water through, it pushes it through to those pumps, that way they're, they're good. And it's actually, actually ready to go, actually.
Yeah, you should have it ready before next week, or before July weekend.
Yeah, he'll, if anything tomorrow, Monday, he'll finish it up.
Was he, was he gonna do anything in the community center, too, or?
Yeah, that's, that's the next, uh, the next process, process that, we got that funding from, uh, San Isabel, he's gonna go back and fit, put that hand sink in there. And one other issue is that, uh, regarding the bear grant, we applied for a $50,000 bear grant with the city of Trinidad, uh, Division Wildlife is looking at this right now. It looked pretty.
A bear what?
A bear grant to replace a lot of the trash containers within the community. So, uh, uh, we're still waiting to hear from them, but it, you know, I did talk to the division, it, it still looks pretty promising for being that two municipalities join forces and, and try to get a grant together, so. That's my report.
Alright, thanks, Jeff. Open us. Now write the vote.